The 4th County Commission meeting will be led in the pledge by Ken McFarland. Ken?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ken. Just a reminder to silence your cell phones, please. Meeting documents are next to Commissioner Kelly, and if you need a listening device, Robert's not here.
I know where they are.
We got two really important events tomorrow. Cindy Heiburger and John Pecus are having birthdays. Both of them now be able to vote, so that's great. Merry Christmas and happy birthday, and to everyone else, Merry Christmas, and thank you for your support this year. It's been awesome, and I hope you all have a safe and happy holiday. So with that, we'll get right into the routine business.
Item number one is consider a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. Any corrections, changes? If not, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion unanimously passes.
Item number two is to approve the county commission minutes of December 17th, 2013.
We have a motion.
Motion to approve the minutes.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from 12/17. Any corrections? With that, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Item three are bills to be paid in the amount of $463,381.30.
Is there a motion?
Pay the bills.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments?
Mr. Chairman, this includes just under $200,000 to Metro Communications.
Thank you, Jeff. Any other comments? With that, those in favor of paying the bills of $463,381.30, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Item number four are reports. The Minnehaha Lincoln County Economic Development Association 2013 Annual Report was received and is placed on file in the auditor's office. Item five is personnel actions. Item A is to approve the routine action.
Is there a motion to approve routine personnel action?
Motion.
Checkup. Motion and a second. Any comments? If not, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion unanimously passes.
There are no application for abatement today. Number seven is notice and request. The item A is to authorize a county auditor to publish a notice to bidders for Minnehaha County Public Safety Building Freight Elevator refurbishment.
Any comments about the notice? Ken?
Lloyd's here.
Oh, sorry. I couldn't see ya. Lloyd, do you have any comments this morning about that?
No, not really, other than the elevator is 1975 inch and in need of replacement. Bids on the capital improvement schedule, and it has been for several years.
Okay. Thank you, Lloyd. Any other questions? If not, we're looking for a motion.
Motion to move to authorize notice.
We have a motion to publish. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any other questions? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
There are no planning and zoning notices today, and there are no petition for compromise of lane. The next item is an opportunity for public comment.
If anyone has any comments that they'd like to make on an item that is not on the agenda, we would like to hear from you. You're getting to be a regular, Mr. Colby.
Three times as regular.
Okay. Once in the paper council, right?
Well, it was not an obituary. I came here to thank Mr. Asop who spoke last week after I did, and he proved up one thing, that words are important. If it wouldn't be for words, and their importance, we wouldn't have diplomats weighing every word they say. We wouldn't have legislation going to the LRC so the wording is correct, as according to what they're trying to say. Mr. Asop said that, if I remember correctly, that the term separation of church and state didn't appear till sometime later in a communication of correspondence. When the Supreme Court looks back at how to interpret a law, they look at the correspondence and the written word, that the people who drafted the legislation or drafted the Constitution, what they were thinking and what they were saying, because time changes, words change, and when one of the drafters says separation of church and state, they would take that into consideration, and that's the reason that we have the legislation we have and the opinions we have regarding that. Words are important. If I were, I deal a lot with time, and if I were talking about time not moving forward or time one way or another, I could say to Commissioner Heiburger, gazing upon you makes time stand still. And if I said something to Commissioner Kelly, like, you know, your face would stop a clock, I've said the same thing, but I've used words to impart two different things. If words are important, when you're trying to say something, you have to choose your words. And when Mr. Asop talked about the drafters of the Constitution going to seminary, he was implying they went to theological seminary. If you went to common school, six to eight grades, that was sufficient, at least they thought at that time. If you went on to further education, you went to an academy, a seminary. That was secondary education, and I'm surprised, only half of them went to seminary. These were some of the luminaries of the time, and they would have had more education than that, than just going to the seminary. So words from the 18th century defined with 20th century definition, you can't do that. You can't do that. So when the gentleman went to seminary, they were more highly educated than the other people. It did not relate to their religious training. If they would have had religious training, it would have been a theological seminary. I just wanted to make that comment, and I thank Mr. Asop for pointing that out inadvertently. Thank you, and have a good Merry Christmas.
Any other public comments on any item that is not on the agenda? With that, we'll move to item 10.
Item 10 and the regular business is to authorize the chairman to sign the joint security protection agreement between the South Dakota Department of the Military and Minnehaha County. Keith Winyah.
Good morning, Commissioner. Keith Winyah, Air Guard Division Supervisor.
Keith, would you do us a favor and move that microphone? There you go. Thank you.
Is this good?
That's perfect.
Okay. All right. This is going to be your guys' approval for the 2014 Air Guard Security Protection Agreement. This year, the amount of monies is agreed at $914,000.700. This should be expected to cover all the costs of operations for the Air Guard Division throughout the fiscal year 2014. Is there any questions?
Any questions of Keith this morning? We've seen this before. I think it's very, very similar, if I remember right.
Yeah, the only thing that changed was the money amount, so.
Yep. No questions?
And that money is sufficient to cover our costs?
Yep, that will cover all the division's operational needs, so.
Thank you.
With that, we're looking for a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Thank you.
Item number 11 is consider a bid award for Project MC-50-215-010, demolition and replacement of bridge structure located in Del Rapids Township. Bids were opened December 18th. Shannon Schultz.
Good morning, Commissioners. Merry Christmas, happy holidays. Nice to see all your reds and greens up there. So this item before you is basically a bid award to replace an existing structure up by Del Rapids that is going to be replaced with a triple 10 by 7 cast-in-place box culvert. We opened bids and had four good bids, and the lowest qualified bidder appears to be Dakota Contracting, which was about $11,000 over a construction estimate, or a professional engineer's estimate. So we're pleased with that, and if there's any other questions, I can answer them.
Thank you, Shannon. Anyone have any questions for Shannon this morning? Ken?
Good idea, just to read the high and low bit.
Okay. As in your contractors, or your agenda item packet, the low bid, again, is Dakota Contracting at $361,000, $361.76.73. The highest bid was by BX Civil Construction at $493,926.15. And then we had two in between there, a lot closer to the $400,000 side than the $500,000 side, so we're happy with Dakota's bid.
Okay. Thank you, Ken.
Make a motion to accept the bid by Dakota Contracting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the low bid for the Del Rapids Township. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion unanimously passes.
Item 12 is to authorize the chairman to sign agreement for temporary construction easement for BRO 805064032U, Spook Road Bridge with Gary and Jane Newman. Shannon Schultz.
Good morning again, Commissioner Shannon Schultz, Department of Highway, Senior Project Engineer. Sorry, I did say that before. This is the Spook Road Bridge project. It is under construction. It is 100% designed and construction administered by the State of South Dakota DOT Department of Transportation, and the reason we're seeking a second temporary construction easement is the state, through a research project, has driven some additional pile on the south side of the structure. They have an H pile and a round pipe pile, and so they're, they're basically put those right in the way where the contractor would need to go to ordinarily remove the existing structure and then also continue to build the new structures, substructures. So it's kind of an oversight on their part. They didn't have it in the plans at the time when I went and secured the easements on the front end of this, and so we are doing it now.
Any questions of Shannon? I would say that the Gary and Jane Newman's offer is very reasonable for what they're putting up with.
Well, I agree with you in terms of inconvenience.
No.
And perhaps some hardships. In terms of land itself, it's a very small area. We would probably pay less if we bought it and did the title than to rent it for a year.
Don't tell them that now.
They know. I've been very frank with them. They're cooperative, but just like anybody, when they're being invaded, you know, their privacy is being invaded, they're not thrilled at all times, but they are cooperative.
Yeah, very inconvenience.
Make a motion to have the chairman sign this temporary easement.
Thank you. We have a second. We have a motion and a second to sign the temporary construction easement. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 13 is consider a motion to approve change order number one, the final quantities adjustment for a deduct of $10,362.27 for Project MC-50-194-059-2 Baltic Bridge. Tom Wilsley.
Good morning. Tom Wilsley, Minnehaha County Highway Department. The change order in front of you is our final adjustment to final quantities on several items, including some that we removed items completely. So we ended up with a savings of $10,362.27 for the Baltic structure.
Make a motion to approve that change. I do have a question.
Second. We have a motion and a second, Commissioner.
Tom, there had been some settling along the ramps going up to those bridges. Is that going to be a continuing problem? Do we think we've got it solved? Made for a bump for people?
Yeah, there are bumps at the, especially at the east end of the structure. It's real bad. We're trying to figure out what we're going to do to alleviate that problem.
Do we need to go over winter to have things settle?
Well, we'll see what happens in the spring. That's about all I could say. Right now, we're looking at and figuring out if we need to put approach spans on the bridge. This might be a design oversight when we build the bridge.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Any other questions? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Item 14 is consider a motion to approve change order number two, final quantities adjustment in the amount of $21,249.60 for Project MC-121SDR-12 Aeros Road Bridges. Tom Wilsley.
This project is actually two structures up on the Aeros Road Bridge. We had a previous change order for part of the extra work we had to do. This one is adjusting everything to finalize builds and also paying additional contractor furnished borrow to replace some of the bad materials that were on this structure. We ran into a lot of real muddy material. We could not build a road out of it, so the net result is an increase of over $21,000.
Any questions of Tom? Is there a motion?
There is, to approve that change order.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Tom, you, now that we're almost to the end of the year, and we've had a few change orders on and off of these projects, do you have a net figure of where the bridge construction projects are dollar-wise?
I think, actually, they come in a little under what we had originally figured for. We've had enough minuses to cover the plus, I believe.
At some point after the close, could we look at that?
Yeah.
Or at least just send us a memo would be great.
You bet.
Thanks, Tom. We have a motion and a second to approve the change order. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Have a great trip.
Oh, I will.
All right.
Item 15 is to authorize the chairman to sign agreement between Pictometry International Corp. and Minnehaha County for aerial imagery. Scott Anderson.
Thank you. Good morning, Scott Anderson, representing the Planning Department. You have in front of you a memo that Ken McFarland prepared. Thank you, Ken. And it outlines the pictometry contract that we have been negotiating and working on with pictometry. This is to provide, if you're not familiar, and the public may not be familiar with what pictometry is, it is aerial photography that allows you to look at, maneuver around buildings and look at buildings. It gives us a much greater tool to be used throughout the county, particularly our office equalization. It also has added benefits to law enforcement, because you're able to see buildings clearer and exits and features that they can also use. As the contract is before you, it is for a total of $161,000, and we discussed this in this year's budget. It has been broken down. The contractor was very willing to work with us to break this down into a three-year payment to make it a little easier for us to accommodate our budgeting. So in 2014, which will be next year, there is a total due of $54,734. The majority of that will be coming out of the planning budget. The highway deposit is going to be contributing $10,000 for the first year, because they also have great use of that. Then there will be two additional payments in 2015 and 16, which we will need to budget for. Payments would be $53,800, or sorry, $384. I'd be glad to answer any questions. This has gone before our GIS committee. Commissioner Heiburger's on that committee. We've had a lot of discussions about pictometry. I'd be glad to answer any questions you have. I think you're all familiar with the value and the importance of our aerial photography and having updated current photography. Our previous air photos are from 2008. So we're looking, you know, at now going on six years of growth that's occurred, and we have the great benefit of being in a county and a location that we really are seeing a lot of growth and changes, and that will be reflected in our new photography.
Thank you, Scott. Commissioner Heiburger?
I think, aren't we doing it the same time the city is, and so it's a continuous flyover? So it was also more economical for us to do it at the time that the city's going to do it.
Yeah, we work with the city closely, and actually, they house our data at the, the city server houses our imagery, the GIS, the pictometry data, so we work with them.
Go ahead.
Just one more comment. Then the resolution is greatly improved. I think you can see a tennis ball.
Yeah, I am not sure what the resolution is. Three inch and nine inch, and our 2008, one foot, so, you know, and sometimes it could be four times better resolution, so that's why I brought Josh down, because this is Josh.
That's right.
Because I wasn't exactly sure, but he's been working with the contract too closely, so if you have a lot of detailed questions, I'd be glad to introduce Josh Hellman, our GIS analyst. He can come up and put out all the details.
Josh, do you have any additional comments?
Josh Hellman, GIS analyst. And another benefit of the mosaic, that it's going to be with the city's new imagery that this company can provide for us. So basically, it'll be one seamless image across the county, whereas if we were to go with a different company, we wouldn't be able to have that seamless dataset. So there won't be, and the city is flying part of the county. They go over into Brandon some, so they do take that part from us, which is kind of nice.
Good. Commissioner Kelly, do you have some questions?
It's more for Scott. There's a couple of questions. You've been in discussion, some discussion with Lincoln County about their GIS situation. Has there been any talk about Lincoln County President and this thing as far as getting their northern part of their county?
Well, we, I have been initially, some initial discussions with Lincoln County. We're going to meet in January to see what, what options, what avenues, paths that we can use to work together and our GIS. It's my understanding that they have a different type of a dataset, and, I mean, we're going to also include Sioux Falls. I was telling Commissioner Barth this yesterday, because we work much more closely with Sioux Falls, the city of Sioux Falls, right now. They host our, or house our data, our GIS data. We're going to have to really bring the city of Sioux Falls in that discussion as well.
I think, though, that, you know, if, if they were going to remap at some point in the next five years, this would be their best opportunity.
Yeah.
If you do come to an agreement with them, it would work better. The second question is, do they do it in the spring or the summer?
They do it in the spring, late spring.
So the trees are already all out and stuff?
Yeah, ideally, what they like is no leaves, but a little bit of green in the grass, so you can, it gives you a better, a better picture.
But you don't see the buildings as much.
That's right. You can't, they don't want, preference, I think it even says in the contract, it's leaf off.
No, no snow pervert.
No snow. Leaf off, no snow, but, you know.
As late as they can.
I mean, if you recall, this year, we had snow on May 3rd, 2nd, so, I mean, you have, they, you're a little bit left up to the, to the mercy of Mother Nature. I mean, typically, they'll, they'll do this in April. They like to shoot for April, but, yeah, that's, they want to get the contract signed, so they, we want to sign the contract early so they can schedule us in, so we can get the leaf off period arranged and set.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Any other questions for Scott? Commissioner Pecus?
Well, leaf off and a little green, that gives you about 48 hours. So you're going to have to fly fast.
That's why we're giving them plenty of lead time, so they can plan that 48 hours.
Do we have a motion?
Yep.
I'll make a motion to sign that contract.
We have a motion and a second to sign the agreement with Pictometry International. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion unanimously passes.
Thank you.
Item 16 is consider a motion to appoint Bill Even or Even to a four-year term on the Minnehaha County Planning Commission. Scott Anderson.
Thanks. Thank you. Once again, Scott Anderson, representing the Planning Department. I prepared a memo indicating that Susie O'Hare's term as our planning commissioner is expired, or is expiring at the end of this month, and she's not seeking reappointment, which left us an opening on the planning commission. We advertised that through the commission office. I worked with Robert. We prepared a memo, sent it out through the news, all the news channels. We posted it on our website, put flyers downstairs on the bulletin boards upstairs in my office. We solicited candidates, and we received one application from Mr. Even, and I think Mr. Bill Even is here. I haven't had a chance to meet him yet, but I forwarded your, his information to you for your review, and I'm asking that you review his information, and if it's your choice, I, we have the option of appointing him to the planning commission today, and this would be for a full four-year term.
Okay.
So with that, I'll.
Bill, would you like to make some comments? Introduce yourself.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Bill Even. I'm a resident of Humboldt, South Dakota, and as Scott had indicated, did submit an application for the ability to serve on the Minnehaha County planning position. Thank you for considering that today, and learned about the posting from a, from a mutual friend, and he said, well, he said, there's going to be an opening on the school board, and there's an opening on the planning commission. And we talked about it, and I said, well, it sounds like you can, you could maybe apply for the job where you run the risk of getting yelled at by an angry parent, or the job where you run the risk of getting yelled at by an angry landowner, and I thought the, the landowner and the planning position commission might be a little safer. So any questions you may have? Otherwise, thank you so much for your consideration. I appreciate it.
Oh, thank you for filling in the request for a nomination, if you will. Commissioner Pecus?
Well, and I just want to go on the record that, you know, Bill has served the state of South Dakota honorably as a Secretary of Agriculture. He has a Juris Doctorate. I can't imagine a more impressive individual that would be willing to serve on our planning, planning commission, so I wholeheartedly endorse it, not only as professionally, but personally, he's a good friend, so, yeah.
Awesome. Commissioner Barth?
Well, I'd like to say a couple of things. First of all, Susie O'Hare did a fine job working with her for the last year. She, she really ran our meetings well, and it's not always a happy job. Secondly, I do, I am very, very happy to have you coming on board with us here, Bill. You have a plethora of experience that, you know, as a farmer, as a kid growing up on a farm, as the Secretary of Agriculture. You know, it's not really well-known, but Minnehaha County this past year was the fourth county in the state in ag income.
That's right.
The drought hurt us a little bit. We were the third county in ag income the year before, and, you know, people think of Minnehaha County as the big city. Well, we are, in fact, the number four county in the state for ag revenue, and that includes, at least the year before, we were, I think, number three in soybeans, number four in corn. And, you know, we've obviously got cattle and everything else, dairy, et cetera, so it's so important that we recognize agriculture in this county, and certainly, this commission really does, I got to say, and it's, it's great to have you coming forward with us. Do we have a motion? I'll make one.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Bill's application on planning and zoning. Any other questions? Commissioner Kelly?
Well, I just want to make a comment, too. I think Bill really brings a great deal to the planning commission, and I think, I think we're very fortunate to get him to have an interest in the job, and his knowledge of state and local is going to be a big factor, so I also endorse him fully.
I don't think it's illegal for you to be on the school board and the planning.
And he's got good common sense.
Any other comments? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion unanimously passes. Welcome. Thank you for your service. Look forward to seeing you in the future.
Item 17 is consider supplements to close out the year for various items, which are reimbursements and pass-through dollars. Darlene Johnson.
Good morning, Darlene Johnson from the auditor's office. We are requesting several supplements, and these are based on reimbursements and grants that we have received. The first is to the planning budget, and that's ASN 18280, and that was for the Minnehaha County Cleanup Project, and we received reimbursement from the state. That amount is $5,346.66. The second is also in the general fund and is to the Safe Home Budget, ASN 18180, and that is for our Safe Home Donations line item, and the amount is $1,100. And that's. that is for our Safe Home Donations line item, and the amount is $1,100, and that represents donations received during 2013. The remainder of the, of the supplements are in the pass-through fund, and those are various grants that we receive and pass through to various agencies. Do you want me to read the, each one of the ASNs?
I think we do need to have those read.
The first is ASN 20350, and that's Other Professional Services, and that is a Juvenile Accountability Block Grant. The amount, $52,316. The second, ASN 20351, this is Community Development Block Grant, Block Grants, there were two of them. The amount, $166,802. ASN 20356, and that is for the Indian Child Welfare Professional Services, $98,160. The next is ASN 20357, and that is for the VOA Reception Center, and the amount is $100,000. The next, ASN 20358, and that is the Juvenile Justice and Delinquency Prevention Act Grant, and it's for the disproportionate minority, minority contact. The amount is $120,000. And the last is 20359, and that is the Juvenile Detention Alternatives Initiative Expansion Grant for $25,000. And those are all representing federal grant reimbursements.
Thank you, Darlene. Anyone have any questions for Darlene on the pass-through grants or some of the other reimbursements? If not, entertain a motion.
Motion approved.
And we can do all three at one time. I'm sorry, John. We can do all three at one time, so.
That was your motion, wasn't it?
Yep.
That's what I seconded, Mr. President.
Thank you, John. Any other questions? All those in favor of the reimbursement and pass-through grants, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion unanimously passes. Merry Christmas.
Thank you, and Merry Christmas.
The next item is Minnehaha County Commissioner Liaison Reports.
Anyone have any liaison reports this morning? Oh, you do have one. Sorry.
Yeah, as long as we were talking a little bit about Safe Home, and I think most of you were there for the, for the luncheon Lloyd put on. Things have really gone well there this year. I believe right now they're full, and I think their year-to-date is somewhere around 95% if I'm not correct. They're getting, this was, this was a donation, I think, from the ladies group that had been raising money, but they've been getting things, not necessarily monetarily, but getting items from a lot of different businesses, and it's just slowly, you know, and slowly that word's out there, and I think they, they have something they can give, and, and so it's working quite well. And, you know, I'm, have to eat my words on what I thought about Safe Home originally because it's, it's really had a successful two years, and I think it's been a good investment on our part. We've kept a lot of people off the street. We've got a few of them that are in recovery, so it's, it's working.
Thank you, Dick. Any other comments? Any other liaison reports? If not, we'll go into new business. Anyone have any new business this morning? Any old business?
Mr. Chairman, recognizing that today is Christmas Eve, I just want to say that for those of us that have misbehaved during the year, it's still not too late to start doing better, and, you know, every, every saint has a past and every sinner has a future. Do your best. See you tomorrow.
This is a deathbed confession.
We may need to have a priest at the next.
Mr. Chair, I'm pretty, I'm pretty sure Commissioner Barth had three ghosts visiting.
Good one, John. Commissioners from commissions past.
There was one year-to-day.
Yeah. With that closed, we will go into executive session for legal briefing and litigation. Do I have a motion?
That's one motion.
Second. Do we have a motion and a second to go into exec session for legal briefing and litigation? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion unanimously passes.